You see item G, just one small change there that says "a contract," add an "s" to that. There's two contracts as Stephanie sent out to you earlier today. So with that small addition, I would like for approval of the consent agenda.
So, me.
Thank you, Roy.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rich.
I'm abstaining.
Okay, you're good. And as asked, Roy, are we?
I need abstaining also.
Okay.
Thank you.
So we still have four.
We have them all.
Yep, okay. All right, all in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Good. Consent agenda is approved. We go on to difference makers. Dr. Luthcom, can we have anybody there?
We do. One of our goals is to recognize difference makers as we strive to give all of our students hope for a better tomorrow by becoming a premier school district and ensuring that all of our students can read at or above grade level. We have many difference makers across the district. Don Bearhorse would like to recognize the student information department with regards to making a difference, and I'll turn the floor over to you, Don, so thank you.
Not everyone was able to attend this evening. We've got a member on maternity leave and then a couple of prior commitments, but this group of folks and the folks in the student information planning assessment department worked tirelessly to make sure everyone is ready for school. They enroll 400 families in three weeks. They work from the end of July till the end of August. They're working till eight o'clock at night just to make sure kids can start school the first day. They are making sure that teachers are ready to give assessments, they're ready to have grade books set up, the trainings are ready to go, secretaries are ready to file their registration documents. It's just, everyone is busy with the start of school, but I think a couple of things sets this team apart. First of all, they work tirelessly and give up their time away from their families to serve others, but also they work as a team. This team works so well together, and they come together, and when someone has a deadline to meet, someone else jumps in and helps out. Whether they have a hundred other things that are on their plate that also have to get done, they just, it's give and take, and so the way they work together, I think, is what really distinguishes them from as difference makers and putting their needs behind those of our patrons and school staff. So I'm pleased to give them the difference maker award this evening.
Absolutely. Okay, thank you, Don.
Yes.
Thank you for giving up.
Oh, I can present.
But you presented to them, absolutely.
Don loves pictures.
Don, you come right back on this side, I'll get on this side. So thank you guys for all your work.
I feel repaid.
Awesome, two over here.
Everyone's trying to decide who can get in the back.
Larry can be in the very back, Larry's tall as.
Ready? Two, three. Good, guys.
There we go. Thank you.
Thanks, ladies.
Okay, next, under this, that was under our learning ship, learning ship. Under our learning pillar. Our next one is partnership with the ship theme here. So we have three pillars of our core values of a learning partnership and stewardship. So learning is the student information department. Bridget Frank, which happens to be her birthday today.
Happy birthday.
She would like to recognize the community health center as making a difference, so Bridget.
So Jeff Davis and Cassidy Bax could come on from the community health center?
Yay.
Thank you. This year, we were excited to partner with, continue our partnership with the community health center, but in a new way. So this year, we partnered with the health center to provide onsite immunization clinics at our secondary school sites. Over 300 students receive their immunizations at these clinics. It was a great service to our families, and it really helped to ensure that our students were able to attend school on the very first day. So we just cannot thank the community health center enough. It was a great benefit to our students and to our district.
Thanks, you guys. Thank you for making the difference. Thank you very much.
They just got married, right?
Yes.
The old ones just had the baby.
Okay, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Mrs. Joy Johnson, a Lewis and Clark science teacher. Were you aware we're going to introduce her, Dan? Dr. Fisher, awesome. So the floor is yours. Thank you for being here, and I'll turn the floor over to you.
So I want to introduce Mrs. Joy Johnson. So this year, and this is like really close to my heart because of the service component that goes into what she's doing this year. So on her own, she has come up with a pantry that is actually in her classroom that has clothes and snacks and different things, toiletries, different things that the kids at Lewis and Clark would need. She's gotten lots of donations. I think her husband has gone in and gotten lots of things for her as well. I personally have used it quite a few times. I've had a kid come in that had wet socks from the rain, so she had brand-new socks, and the kids really want new stuff when they're putting socks on. So we had pulled out of, new socks right out of the package, and he really appreciated that. He's like, "Now, are these boy socks or these girl socks?" And they were boy socks. So she's taking careful consideration and looking and making sure that we can meet the needs of all these kids that are sometimes a little afraid to ask for help, but she leads a very safe classroom and a safe place, having students involved in it. And her child is at TJ, starting the same thing, so kind of passing that along and paying it forward. So she is a, she's a real difference maker, not only with our kids, but with her own children so that she can pass that along elsewhere in the district, which I think is really exciting. So congratulations to Joy.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
That's great.
Here we go.
Thanks.
Thank you, Dan.
Thanks for those.
Yep.
Always good to recognize partners and staff for good work.
Absolutely.
Moving on to superintendent update.
Yes. So we have, we do our official count here in the middle of September. After the dust settles, the state asks schools to look at the third week of September, which is approaching us as far as our official enrollment and our count. I had asked Don to see here, a couple of weeks or maybe a week into school, compared to the same time last year, what was our enrollment school-wide. We have 66 more students this school year than we did last year at the same time. That is not official because that will not be official until the third week here in September. So just to kind of give you an idea, we've mentioned throughout that we're not growing like crazy, but it's just been a steady, a steady incline. Finished our testing today as our number one, as you see JC Reads here and around in shirts and different things as our focus, that all of our students will finish testing today. So I don't have that data to see where we're starting at the beginning of school, so we're excited about that. Just for you, 100%, we want 100% of our students reading at or above grade level, but first we need to see where we are at the beginning of the year. So we'll provide some of that data for you next month, ensuring that our students are reading at or above grade level. Under the partnership, I have here for you the, our picture on our opening session, which is our JC Reads. That will be our posters or our wallboard here for this year, and I'll just give you a copy of that for those folks out here, as you can see that, so we're excited about that. Our focus, that was all of our staff on opening session coming together, so we're excited about that. A rounding update as far as just being in our buildings. Thanks to Brenda helping us kind of coordinate, ensuring that we know what's going on and boots on the ground in our buildings. So that's something that we're asking our folks here in central office to be in our buildings on a regular basis, at a minimum one a week. They record that, they document that, and then we hold folks accountable. Each Monday at our meetings, we draw tongue depressors out with names on them. We draw four out, and those folks have to give an update, and so that's going really well. I think Brenda shared that one of the principles shared with her today or last week of please make sure we keep doing this. So I think it's been well received in our buildings. We're asking them, hey, what's working well? What do you need help with? And then three, who needs to be recognized as a difference maker? So we've been excited about that. It's been very favorable with that. We concluded last week on our three of three of our training, of our diversity training last week, and that went really well. Dr. Simmons came down and facilitated that, and from that, we just sent out a survey that will help us, what are the next steps from that? Had a lot of very positive feedback. Brenda did a plus delta of what they liked about it, what can we get better at, and just having the conversations and the education standpoint was very positive. We said last fall when we talked about with the diversity of our hiring practices, so our staff would better reflect our student population, the PD, the training of our staff, which that's what we just concluded, but we'll have a next step that we'll report back here after we get our survey back. And then three, there was a diversity committee years ago that had kind of maybe been put on the shelf, and so we are having an equity council. And equity is the basis versus a diversity. The base word of diversity is divide, diverse, as in a, we're not in this together, so an equity council, equity, that we're all in this together. So we're excited about that. Our first meeting, we're going to send something out the end of this week. We have a committee that's not finalized yet. Thanks to Ken and Laura for your willingness to serve on that. Shelby will facilitate this, we're excited about that. We have priorities, we have a mission. Our mission is to work together to ensure there's unbiased and equal support for all students. We'll do this by providing opportunities and access for all learners by engaging in an active process for solutions. And that first meeting, we hope to come up with some short-term goals, as the old saying of, this is a big thing. How do you eat an elephant? Well, one bite at a time, so how do you tackle this? One chunk at a time. So we're going to come up with some short-term goals through the folks on the committee, and we'll be giving you guys updates on that, so we're excited about that. And then boundary lines, we have that as an agenda item later in the meeting, so we'll touch on that at that time, and that's all I've got. Any questions for me? Okay, thank you.
Chief of learning update from Dr. Tindor.
All right. Good evening. I want to give you just a few updates on some projects that we've been working on. One of those is the, last year we started talking about our Grow Your Own program because of some challenges that we had with filling some leadership positions, and so just want to give you an update. We do have currently eight staff members who have agreed to participate in a Missouri Leadership Development Program. It is a program designed by Desi, and we're partnering with Mizzou, and so we have them enrolled, and they're starting, and so the, it's called the MLD, but the MLD basically it's an ongoing professional development component that takes you from aspiring leadership to emerging leadership to developmental and then to transformational. So it's an ongoing process for developing leadership, and they focus around five domains. They are to be a visionary leader, an instructional leader, a managerial leader, a relational leader, and to be innovative. And so we're excited about that program and to watch some of our folks grow as they go through that leadership development program. Also, another update, I've been talking to you about the iReady Toolbox, which is a planning tool for teachers. We currently use, you know, last year we started talking about some of the challenges we have with lesson planning and teachers being prepared in the classroom, and so we did a lot of training last year with the CIR rubric process, which is basically rubrics that allow a teacher to look at their planning process to ensure that they're planning lessons that are engaging, that they're rigorous, and that they're meaningful wrapped around the curriculum that we have. And so to support that this year, all teachers K8 have access to the iReady Toolbox, which is a assist in their planning. So as they're looking at the curriculum and they're planning their instruction with the rubrics, they also can look at the iReady Toolbox, and it provides them resources for how, ways or resources that you can use to teach those standards. So we hope that it's a benefit to teachers this year. I provided for you in my board report the data that we, initial data that we collected from our new teacher week. We're excited to see that it looked pretty positive this year compared to past results. In the past, we got a lot of comments like, you know, it really wasn't meaningful, not sure we needed that, it was too long. This year's comments were anywhere from 80 to 95% of the participants responded to all of the different days that we had them and all the different activities that they went through, and overwhelmingly, they scored them as being meaningful in preparing them for the classroom. So we're excited that it's better this year and looking forward to be able to take that and modify it for next year, but it was really a great, it was a great week of learning with our new folks and excited about it. And then lastly, the interactive panels that are going up in our high school, those are up and being used, and so Joe's department has been working with those teachers to identify the needs that they have in terms of professional development, what do they need in terms of making sure they're comfortable with those panels. They've identified, here about a week ago, identified some needs that they have, and next week, next Wednesday, Clear Touch will be in our district all day at the high school to offer any training to help meet the needs of those staff that are using those panels, and anyone who wants to start to learn about them, Clear Touch is working with us to provide that for teachers, so we're excited about providing that for our staff. Questions about those items?
How many of the classroom have the new panels?
Right now, there's 10.
Okay.
Correct?
12.
12, I'm sorry, 12.
28 coming next, 28 more coming next one.
In the next round.
Okay. Thank you, Brian.
Mr. Altman, you're up.
It's going to take some time this evening to give you an update on the construction. We haven't had a big update. We'll have a really big update coming at the next board meeting. I'll start with Capital City High School. Just remember, this is a huge project on a very, very aggressive timeframe. So the reports, so every week, we have a meeting with NavHOLs, with the architect team, and with us as the owner. And so one week, it's at Capital City High School, and the next week, it's at Jeff City High School, so every Wednesday. So we get regular updates. So the plan at Capital City High School is the main building, the cafeteria and admin will be under roof by November 1st, which is quite a bit ahead of schedule. They had an original goal of Thanksgiving, and now they're saying it's going to be ready by November 1st, which is excellent news. They say there's some exciting things that's going to be worth witnessing next week as they're going to start the pre-cast paneling setting up, so they're going to have cranes swinging in, these great big pieces of pre-cast panel going up. So they've told Ryan several times, we need to be out there to get pictures out of this because it's going to be pretty cool to see. We're still waiting on a permit from the Corps of Engineers to get down and start doing all the grading work that we need to get the practice fields in line, but the building is on schedule for opening with classrooms, admin, kitchen, and cafeteria by the fall of '19. The gym is going to come later in the first semester, and then the completion by January 1st of 2020. So any questions on Capital City High School? We can come back if you have some. So while that building is a super-big project on a super-aggressive schedule, it is nothing like what's happening at Jeff City High School. I mean, it is 265,000 square foot of building being renovated with almost 2,000 students, adding on an additional 40,000 square feet, and then we also have to abate asbestos in that building when we don't have students. So I can't say enough good things about Jacob Adams, Bob James, and then the whole high school staff. I mean, they're, they've been great, they're working around a lot of difficult stuff, and they've been fabulous. NavHOLs has been super accommodating as well. We've, in the construction, we're creating some collaboration spaces that are meant to be open, but during the construction, we're having to use them as classrooms. And so our staff, when we opened Area G for the start of school, the, what we call the third floor, everyone else is calling the fourth floor, they were open spaces, and they're like, well, we can't have classrooms with no walls. So they came in and they brought shelving in to block the space, being creative, worked with what they had. We got with NavHOLs, and we said, that's not going to work for the next two years. What can you come up with? So Architects Alliance drew a wall, a temporary wall that connects to the ceiling and the floor, not the sides, and within a week, they had constructed this wall and has a door for safety, so I mean, they, it was just snap your fingers, and they were like, we're on it. So that's just one example of what they've done. The second and third floor of Area G is going to be turned over to us on October 12th, so that's when 28, right, Joe? The other 28 interactive panels and all those classrooms come on. We will then take kids out of J Village, move them into that space, and then vacate spaces in Nichols, where they will go on the top floor of Nichols and start on that area, and that, they'll work there until the middle of January, and then we'll do another We had our pre-bid meeting for the rest of the bidding at Jefferson City High School on August 29th. There was excellent turnout, there's a lot of interest, there've been a lot of questions, and due to the number of questions, we actually pushed back the bid opening. It was supposed to be today, we pushed it back a week. We just wanted to make sure we had all the questions answered so that people could bid appropriately and make sure our interest is high and the bids are done correctly. So we should have a good idea where we are on budget at the end of that day, so keeping our fingers crossed. And NavHOLs plans to do their, do their D scope process just as quickly as possible, and they plan to have us a guaranteed maximum price, a final GMP for Jefferson City or for the whole project at our October board meeting. We may need to ask for a special meeting, but I talked to Michael Feenster today, and he said, we're going to do everything within our power to have that ready by that October board meeting, which is very early. The first is a Monday, so it's the earliest a meeting could possibly be in a month. And we're going to talk about this more later when we get to the calendar, but the summer of 2019 is the most action-packed of the whole project, and that's because, I mentioned, we have to abate asbestos, we have to do that when there aren't students, there's asbestos in the kitchen that has to be abated, in the cafeteria and the gym. Those are huge spaces that have to be abated, so they can't be just done over a break, so we need about four weeks for that, and then those spaces need to be remodeled. So it's, and it's also the Nichols Career Center shops is another big space that we can't just move those areas to a trailer and work on those spaces. So next summer is going to be quite action-packed. So any questions on Jeff City High School or either parts of the project?
Where are we going to do PE at Capital City High School if we have no practice fields and no gym?
Well, we're still hopeful on practice fields, but there, we actually have more classroom space than we need, so we'll have to be creative. We talked today, do we go offsite and do a bowling lesson, or we'll certainly have to be creative.
I'd do bowling. I think that's a good idea.
It was the best when I was a bowler.
Yeah. You might have a school manual. Yeah.
St. Mary's might have some space they can loan us for that.
Too soon.
Pretty, perhaps.
Too soon.
So in my board report, I put in there that the day the board report was due, we had just the day before, received a note from a legislator that has interest in changing the foundation formula drastically next month. And so at that time, we hadn't really had a chance to evaluate the impact, and so I'm on a group of other formula nerds who like to geek out over big spreadsheets, and so we've looked at some things, and the very first thing that he's wanting to do is change, so change one huge aspect of the formula that has been held constant the whole time, and he, it's our assessed valuation, it's a deduct. So it used to be that as your assessed valuation grew, you got less state aid. That was one of the complaints of the old formula. So this formula has that as a static number, and it's been held static since 2005, and he wants to start phasing in assessed valuation growth over a large period of time. And his, so that first, that first item alone affects districts differently depending on how much their assessed valuation has grown, and it only affects about 60% of the districts, so it only affects the formula districts, not the whole harmless districts. So that one item alone would reduce our state aid by $3.7 million, and reduces the call on the formula by $275 million, and that's just the first phase of phasing in that assessed valuation growth. So continuing to evaluate, and we'll have to watch that. And I'll keep you posted. And then I'm going to have Frank come up and give an update on our active shooter training that's been going on throughout the district.
Thank you, Jason.
Good evening. All right. Active shooter training, we started this year, wanted to do it this year in schools. In the past, it's been very large group, not very personal. We wanted to bring it to the schools, in the schools, each one of them, so that, so that people can ask questions, go through some scenario, whatever they would like. So far, we've done nine schools, got a lot of them done before school started. We're using professional development time to do this for the remainder of the year. Part of the RSMO, as far as conducting active shooter training, we, you know, we were getting in there, but the quality of training, I don't feel anyways, was where it should have been, and that's why we went in schools. So we also have an e-learning process that Shelby's put on for active shooter with the Safe Schools. We were at 98% complete by the end of the deadline of July 31st. Some of that was computer issues and also operator just not able to get in and do what they needed to do. So at this point going forward, the RSMO is compliant, and by the end of the year, our whole district will be trained where they need to be. We do have 40 live licenses through, through Alice Training, so as we bring on new employees into our district, we'll have them log on and do that as well, and that, that brings them also to compliances as well as our e-learning process. So we have five additional trainings that'll be done by year end, and then by January 18th, we'll be complete as a district. Multiple thank yous from the people that have been in there, several emails and phone calls prior to the training, hey, what's going on? This is going to, is this scary? I get a lot of apprehension about it. Afterwards, just adelations about it, how thankful they were that we had it, created a lot of ideas, and probably just as many ideas of, hey, this, can we do this? Can we do that? And so I've been very thankful for the input that they've been bringing with the ideas that they have, and a couple of them we're going to pursue, I hope, and be able to do that. But that's where we're at on active shooter training.
Thank you, Frank. Any questions?
Thank you. Thank you, Jason. Moving on to future dates, won't go through all of those, but a couple that I do want to draw your attention to. The first one is the Foundation Gala that's coming up very soon. Hopefully you have that on your calendar and plan to attend. The other item is the MSBA Annual Conference towards the end of this month. If you have the opportunity to attend, I know several of you, I think, have already made arrangements. Really good, very good educational opportunity, have a good number of breakout sessions and usually well worth your time. And the last thing is, notice item K, Board Retreat. We have that scheduled for Thursday, January 17th of 2019, so make sure you put that on your calendars if you haven't had that yet. Moving on to old business. Boundary line updates from Dr. Luth.
Absolutely. Jason, would you bring up our, go to our district website? So Jason, on our current website, if you just go to the top here, the About Us and our current district map. Okay, so this is our current district boundary lines from center town in the far left to the west, which is a part of piney trails to Holt Summerton in the north, Holt Summerton Callaway Hills in north and Callaway Hills, Holt Summerton. Here at Morrel Heights that comes to the Old Sage River. If you go to Land, if you go to Fathom down 63, Italy Boot here at Morrel Heights. So that's our current boundary lines. When we, what started this, I've had some folks, when we start talking about boundary lines, like, why would you do this when you know it stirs up folks? Like, well, we understand that. The land that we own, still own, they're off of Mission Drive or Capital City, we own that land. And so when we campaigned in J plus C, we shared that we anticipated some boundary line tweaks because the location of Capital City High School, which is right here, is within Cedar Hill's boundary lines, and Cedar Hill feeds Lewis and Clark. And we shared at the beginning that Lewis and Clark would feed Jeff City High School, and Thomas Jefferson would feed Capital City High School. So from the beginning, that was communicated that we did anticipate some tweaks. Our timeline, as far as having boundary lines, is the opening of, as Jason gave an update, Capital City High School. We've said fall of '19 for a long time, that's as in next fall, next August. Time is moving along, so we recognize that. So we want, we want to give folks as much time, notice- So, we want, we want to give folks as much time, notice in advance, so they could adjust accordingly if they disagreed, if they wanted to move, if they, we know, and that's why folks have said, "Boundary line? Do you realize how fired up that gets folks?" And we are not looking at 11 elementary schools changing the boundary lines. We are considering some tweaks now. It can still affect folks, we recognize that, but we're not looking at, "Hey, here's 11 boundary lines and we're getting ready to change, you know, good luck." We're not doing that at all. We understand that that is a very, a complex effect, folks. And we've not had the culture within our community and our school district to visit boundary lines on a regular basis. I know Columbia, whether every year or not, but they visit that on a regular basis. And what we've kind of shared is every three to five years that we need to look at boundary lines. That doesn't mean change them, but at least assess and evaluate, are they where they need to be or maybe they need to be tweaked or maybe you do need to go through a wholesale change. So, we want to give folks at least a year notice. Here it is September, so that's 11 months. We, so we'd rather do it right and be 11 months or 10 months versus, you know, rushing into a decision. We started out in 1993, the boundary lines. Jason, could you go to the option three of the scenario to just kind of see our middle school boundary lines right now? So, this is our current school district and other than a little chunk right here of Thorpe Gordon that right now currently is in the pink that goes to Thomas Jefferson, this is our two middle school boundary lines. So, the light blue is Lewis and Clark and the pink is Thomas Jefferson. When we look at those two and as we, in 1993, these boundary lines were drawn with two primary goals, to keep the enrollment, very similar between the two, and to keep the poverty rates very similar between the two. They have held, for the most part, pretty close throughout the years. This year through, I think, last week, Don gave me the information and I have here, or it's on the website there, of this, right now, the poverty rate at Thomas Jefferson is 57% and it's 62% at Lewis and Clark. The diversity is 41% at Thomas Jefferson and 38% at Lewis and Clark. So, those are two. The enrollment-wise, I believe it's 114-ish, over 100 students more at Thomas Jefferson than Lewis and Clark. And those numbers, for the most part, have held pretty consistent over 25 years. There's been some years that the poverty's been higher at Thomas Jefferson and I believe two years ago, it was exactly the same. Three years, two or three, it was actually higher at Thomas Jefferson than Lewis and Clark. But as a whole, it has been higher at Lewis and Clark. So, those two factors of the boundary lines of having the enrollment and the poverty started out with the goals in 1993. And that's the reason why the lines here, if you live out on the seat, there are folks that are much closer to Thomas Jefferson and we've been asked very passionately, for lack of better words, of, "Why don't you fix this? Because it does not make sense. Why do I live right in here and Thomas Jefferson is right up the road? Why do I have to go clear across town? Do you know what traffic's like Larry at that time of day of, you know, very, it's concerning, understandably so." So, we looked at actually drawing the boundary line, the location of Capital City High School's about right here and Jeff City High School's about right here. So, of our district boundary lines, if you drew a line north to south, straight down the middle, we looked at drawing boundary lines and just draw it straight down the middle. And when we did that, there was about 350 more students at TJ and Capital City High School. The poverty rate was 20, 22% higher at Lewis and Clark on this side when we did that. And we said, from 93, it was the poverty rates, the enrollment, try to keep them very similar. We were not going to have the haves and the have-nots. So, that's the reason why there are some folks who feel very passionately that you should just draw it down the middle and if folks don't like it, they'll get over it or they can move. We didn't feel that way. And so, we wanted to try to have, you know, equity and equal and what does that mean? It means different things to different folks. So, this is what our current boundary lines look like. And so, what we did, the enrollment and the poverty and we wanted the attendance lines here of Capital City, as we said throughout the campaign, we anticipated some tweaks of boundary lines. The location right here, we would like it to be included in the boundary line where it resides. And I think the decision, when the board made the decision to, that's the site for Capital City High School, that that decision was made at that time. We owned the land. We looked at some other options. We looked at some other options west, west of our school district for Capital City High School and the decision was, we own this land. It's paid for. 114 acres is paid for that was purchased and it was controversial according to some of how that was purchased years ago. Well, there's water under the bridge. It happened, we own the land and as you look at our lines, it's on, you know, this half and this half. So, with that being said, the goals and Bobby referenced the goals at the beginning, actually starting out the poverty rates, trying to keep those similar between the two, trying to keep the enrollment similar between the two, have it located within the area in which it resides, trying to minimize them. Then we added, throughout, we had 74, tonight is the 74th opportunity that our community has had an opportunity to learn about or address and information finding tonight. And through those, that folks wanted to minimize the number of students changing schools. Okay? The fifth one was, through Thorpe Gordon, because they are currently splitting, was to, as in this portion right here, goes to TJ and then the rest of Thorpe goes here to LC, trying to minimize the schools splitting. So, that was a goal, trying to minimize that. So, those five goals kind of guided us, guided us, led us through the process with this. So, through the board, through a boundary committee, Bobby referenced that, stakeholder feedback, as you got some handouts there, have scenario considerations. So, Jason, you can then go to there on our webpage. So, you can, folks don't mind giving their opinion, "Well, why don't you draw the lines here?" Okay, well, let's look at it. And we did that. We have official, which are all on the website, there was 14 different scenarios. Okay? So, how did we come up with those 14? Through the committee, looking at different scenarios, as far as changing elementary schools completely, looking at Cedar Hill, some that lived in the, excuse me, the part of Cedar Hill that was closer to TJ of wanting to have all of Cedar Hill attend Thomas Jefferson. Okay? Well, we looked at that. Well, we're trying to keep the poverty rates similar, trying to keep the enrollment rates similar. So, we looked at some other options. We looked at having them west elementary, switching that. Well, I can already see some looks in your eyes, like, "Ooh, you're going to go there." We tried looking at all of them and viable considerations. Our demographer, Preston Smith, had an option at the beginning in one of the first meetings of taking the top part of Lawson and offsetting that, excuse me, the bottom part of Lawson, Covington Gardens, with the top part of Cedar Hill and kind of flipping them. Well, those folks are a lot closer to TJ. They didn't mind sharing with us. You guys are nuts. And so, we considered that, but we were willing to look at every possible scenario. So, of probably 35 of going through with a fine-tooth comb of all different kinds of scenarios, down to 14 and then narrowing those down to three. And that's the three of where we are. And what we have here on information is these three scenarios. Trying to give a summary of each one, give some positives and try being very objective on taking from feedback of what is the positive from this scenario. Not that everybody agrees with all of them, but tried with feedback, positives and negatives on each of those scenarios. The board also asked, you guys asked me at the last board meeting, to have, let's look at, if we went with option A, what would happen to the enrollment? What do you anticipate would happen with the poverty? What do you anticipate, what would the diversity be? So, that's what we did on our three options. This is all on our district webpage for all of you and for your viewing pleasure. Just click on, go back to home, Jason, show them how we get here. So, this is JCschools.us, right here, Quick Links, JCPS Boundary Lines. And when you click on that, here's what comes up. So, it's got the three scenarios, the goals of the process, it has those five goals that we referenced earlier, and it's got each scenario and how it meets or does not meet each of those goals. And then, we looked at the schools impacted, how would it impact these schools while, if these, if these scenarios were put into place? We talked a lot about grace periods or attendance areas. The guiding factor in you have here that I included to you a draft, and it's only a draft, for our special permission, is that you go to school where you reside. Okay? And that really should be your current goals. Where you live is where you go to school. Now, if you have a reason why you feel like you need to go somewhere else and there are circumstances, you can apply for special permission. What we have said, we do not want to split families. So, if you have a sibling that is currently attending a school in which then you are anticipating going, but it's outside of where you live, so right now, if you live in TJ, you've been at JC High and then the younger siblings at TJ, if their sibling is, will be at school when you were going to attend there because we don't want to split families, they would be allowed to follow their sibling. If you're a current sixth grader in the area of Thorpe Gordon that has been going to TJ and we're saying where you reside is now, that's LC, you can continue at TJ and follow at TJ with your classmates and then Capital City because you can stay with your classmates. So, those are kind of the two guiding. There are 73 other scenarios. So, we tried having in your draft, you have here about five bullets to try to cover all of them. We think those five bullets will cover about 98% of them. Don came up with another one, that that was outside of that. And so, we looked at that and tried to use some common sense of what that would look like. But those will be an ongoing as we work on these, of what that looks like. At the end of the day, we don't want to split families and we want to keep families together, but you go to school where you reside and that would be kind of the guiding factor with that. So, a lot of information, the attendance guidelines, you have that, narrowed to three. What questions do you guys have for me on any of this information?
Questions for Larry?
I have a question about this option A. So, scenario A, obviously, we move 37 kids from Cedar Hill to South. You have that a trailer will be needed. So, by my math, that's like 14 extra kids. What did Scott, what did we say? Did you say 14? Put it 14 over capacity?
Correct.
If, if you're taking on average.
Well, this is basically on how the, the 37 kids that live within the area that would be switching from Cedar Hill to South. And whether all 37 will be going or not, we don't know, but you would have to figure for that. The capacity for South Elementary, which was done by ACI Bowling within the previous, when we were looking at another elementary school, second high school, Capital City High School, was at 340. So, the 319 plus 37 kids, I believe is 356. And then, that would be 16 kids over and that is if they all would fit perfectly. The expected enrollment, I believe, Brian, did we say in fifth grade was, and South was one of our higher poverty schools. So, trying to keep the, it's, the negative of it is that we're trying to keep the enrollment there down because it's a higher poverty school. Class sizes, we changed some boundary lines. East Elementary is now our second smallest elementary school. Trying to keep that down was a goal and we're afraid that we would have to be able to, we would have to bring, we'd have to be willing to bring a trailer if we went with that, is the negative.
Might.
No, there's no guarantee. I'm not implying.
If the enrollment numbers change, possibility that we would not need a trailer.
We're meaning if those 37 kids that currently live within South would attend, excuse me, that live within Cedar Hill that would attend South, then we would have to bring a trailer.
Using the information you have now.
Correct. With no guarantees.
Not future date.
Absolutely.
We don't know.
Absolutely.
And isn't South one of the schools where the swings, a lot of swinging during the year of kids in and out of that school? It can go up and down. As I understand, the higher poverty schools, a lot of transient kids coming in and out. And so, when you've got a lot of volatility like that and you're already putting them over capacity and you have another 20 kids show up unexpectedly, you know, then you have to be willing to accommodate that with trailers.
Potentially.
Maybe.
Yeah, there's no guarantee, but it is, I think of it being a higher poverty school of trying to keep that, trying to keep the enrollment down.
So, what's the perfect class size that you want in a class number for a teacher? You're saying 25? Could be, second grade could have 25 in a class and fifth grade could have 28. And what's the?
DESI has by grade level a K through two, a three through five, a desirable standard. It fluctuates. They have a minimum, a desirable, a maximum. I don't have that in front of me.
K-2, T-2 is around 21 and then you get 3-5 is around 26.
What's that? What is, what is South at right now?
Currently, right now, they have anywhere from 16 and two of their levels to the highest one is, fifth grade is 25.
And of the 37 students, I believe of fourth grade, it would put that average class size at 28, was that right? If they all went it.
Generally, right now, those kids went, their second grade would be at 25, their fifth grade would be at 28 and those would be the two largest. That would be the largest second grade and the largest fifth grade in the district.
That wouldn't be much fun, would it?
So, but it fluctuates. We have teachers in here. You can have, Emily, you could attest, you could have differing dynamics of demographics and of your class, that it could, you could have 28 that are wonderful and it wouldn't be a big deal and you could have.
And all do the right thing.
Exactly. So, it does, so DESI does give a desirable range. So, you could do that, but it is pushing that especially with the.
It puts, DESI also puts a maximum meeting. If it was to get to this number, then the district would be required to divide up the kids as a section or to put in a parent professional to reduce the class size. And that is, if you are K-1 and 2, the number is 25. The grades, if 3-5 or 3-4 are 27 and then 5-6 is 30. That's maximum. You wouldn't want it to be a maximum, but they allow it.
And to offset that, you're saying that if, if those numbers played out the way that they, they could, would we then have to, would we shift staff to put in a para with the teacher or how would we?
So, under those numbers, we would not be mandated by DESI to offer a para or split the class, but under the current, under the desirable numbers, we would want to. Having 28 kids in the class is not desirable. So, we would then, there's not room, there aren't, there's not space at South to have another classroom, so we would hire a parent professional to go in and support the teacher.
And the district has some recent history with this, as you all recall, after we've worked through some concerns and challenges with East School not too long ago in terms of their population. And that was before there were some changes made to the boundaries of those, had some significant upgrades and updates to that physical plant, that building itself. But, I recall that we heard quite a bit from, from the administration and from the staff that those, those conditions were not ideal, that they were difficult to, they were difficult to learn in, they were difficult to teach in. So, that's what my mind goes back to is, you know, similar scenario.
Well, I do agree with Bobby showers that I think South is a very good school and I think scenario A would be the most ideal, but I don't want to put that kind of pressure on that school by putting them in a really more volatile situation than they're already in. I don't think it's wise to go with option C where your school is not within its own And so, for that reason, I think that we should look at option B with the caveat that we are going to put a policy in place to examine these boundary lines every three to five years. And so, this could change. I mean, what we do tonight could change in three to five years, but I think we need to get it open and we need to see if the poverty levels and the numbers stay where we want them to stay. And we need to commit to look at this more often than we do. So, I make the motion that we accept option B.
You want to allow that? I'll second.
Thank you, Rich. Additional discussion?
Yeah. So, my problem with option B is that it splits, we're splitting an elementary school again, which is what we said we didn't want to do from the get-go. So, I mean, that's like, you know, "Hey, committee, let's bring us an option where we're not splitting like we did with Thorpe because we want to keep families together, we want to keep kids together, we want to keep friends together." And that doesn't meet that, I mean, blatantly doesn't meet that goal. It also increases the poverty disparity. So, I mean, while I agree with you, A is ideal. I think A is ideal. I understand you don't want to put the pressure on South, but I can't, I mean, I cannot vote for B knowing that we're splitting kids just like what we were trying to not do before with another school.
Those people from that neighborhood came here and said they didn't. Those people from that neighborhood came here and said they didn't mind being split.
I, that's one neighborhood.
Yeah.
That's one neighborhood. I mean, as a community as a whole, as a district, we've been talking about the relationships that these kids can build by keeping them together. I couldn't care less what one neighborhood thinks. I mean, really, we can't, we're not going to keep everybody happy, that all of the messages that we've been sending to people is this togetherness and bringing them together and creating relationships and keeping families together. Well, we fix one school to do it to another, regardless of what that neighborhood said, regardless of it.
I, I believe it's the board's responsibility to do what's best for all kids, not 37 kids or...
I agree.
And the thought of anyone thinking that the board believes that South School is not up there with, it's just wrong. They're doing great things, just the same at East School. So there's not one elementary school that's any better than any other school. And we have to be very careful not to give that, that message that that's, that's what we believe, because we want all of our schools to be the best, and, and they're getting there.
I, I agree with you, Lori, and I, I appreciate the concerns about the enrollment. But I want to, I want to make sure I go on record as, you know, very, I disagree significantly with the attitude and the approach that has been given by some people who have spoken to us about, you know, the negative connotation of kids going from Cedar Hill to South. I absolutely disagree with that. I think that we as a board have to, you know, not propagate that at all. I had the opportunity to talk to my niece today, who went to South School as an elementary student, went on to graduate from Creighton with honors, went on to Mizzou Medical School, and just finished her first year, just finished as, as the chief resident at Mayo Clinic in Internal Medicine. And I asked her specifically, I said, you know, we're talking about, and there's been suggestion about South School being negative, and, and she said, absolutely not. I had a great experience at South School. I appreciate, and in some ways, she said, I even felt like I was better prepared because of my opportunity to have a diverse population that I went to elementary school with, as I got to high school and on to college, that was a plus for me. And she said academically, I was very prepared, and I called to say, is it okay if I use you as an example? And she said, by all means, you can say, you know, my experience was outstanding at South. And I would, again, I, however we decide tonight, I want to go on the record, and I want this board to reflect the attitude that we, we will not, you know, propagate the attitude of one school being better than another for, in any way, shape, or form.
I hope there was, if I can interject, I hope there was no part of any of it tonight of anything on South. I mean, I've heard from...
No, no, I'm saying that that attitude has come from those who have spoken in favor of B to say, our, our kids, you know, we don't want our kids to go to South, and I just reject that. I'm offended, I'm offended by that attitude.
Yeah, me too.
I agree. I think the tension has come in large part because of the time that's lapsed since the last time we looked at these boundaries. You know, we go to, you know, change these things up, and, and you get a lot of emotions that people, you know, haven't had to deal with in a long time. 1993, I was a junior, we were seeing in high school. Let's be fair about this. It was a long time ago. So the fact that, that what we need to be doing is every several years, be looking at cost of changes, because that's, every one of these lines is arbitrary by its very nature. We're not going to be able to manipulate the system such that, you know, everybody's going to have their preference. But going forward, I think that Laura is right. We need to be, be looking at this every so often to make sure that we have the best lines that we possibly have for our community, to make sure our schools are great.
I, I think you're exactly right, but I think if we vote for B and split Cedar Hill, it's been setting the precedent that this board's going to reevaluate what they're doing every three to five years, and you never know where your kids are going to go. I mean, it really is like, let's just roll the dice and see, we might split three elementaries in half, and we might split, I mean, it's setting us a new precedent that we're, not only do we guarantee that we're going to feed, you know, TJ's going to feed Capital City, and Lewis and Clark is going to feed JC, but we might also, you never know, your elementary's not safe either. We may split your kids up.
Well, the last time we looked at boundary lines in 2007 is when they opened Pioneer Trail. My kid was going to be a fifth grader. They said, you have no option. I bought my house specifically so I could go to West School. And when my kid was a fifth grader and a third grader, they said, sorry. And you know what? It was just fine. He did just fine, my kids did just fine. The lines aren't defined anymore. I mean, they're playing with each other in club sports and over the Xbox thing and whatever. I mean, they're all spread out anyway. So, you know, I mean, yeah, it was emotional, and I didn't have a choice, but you know what? It was fine. And this will be fine.
So, we have a motion on the table. I would like to offer an amendment to your motion, and that is, I would like to amend your motion to say that the board makes a commitment that we will not even wait three to five years, that if this is adopted, if B is adopted, that we will at September of 2019, when enrollment numbers are available for the, the new year, so we see how they play out, we see how many of the kids in that area, in that swing area do transition to South School. When we have definite information, I would, I would like to offer amendment that says we commit to evaluate this decision in September of 2019, not wait for three to five years from now to look at that scenario again.
Based upon enrollment numbers.
Based on enrollment numbers.
I, I would, I would second that motion, amended motion.
So, you make a lot of good points, Lindsay. However, I see this kind of going down the path of the East School, what we just went through, where we had kids in trailers, school was overpopulated, and it was not a good experience for the teachers and the kids. And I know it's a chance, and we're, you know, we don't know who's going to be whatever. But we just did pass a tax, asking people to raise their taxes to build new school so we can alleviate size, right? So here we are, and then we're going to move some kids into school, and they're raising, they raised their taxes, and now we're going to stick them in a trailer? That's hard for me.
Well, I'm not saying that A is the better option to B.
I understand that.
But we have A and C.
I understand that. I understand that. But I'm, what I'm saying is, I can't justify looking someone in the face who just voted for this, and raised more money, paying more money, and say, oh, by the way, you're now going to be in a trailer? That's why we, I mean, the good things we did at East, it took some time, but it finally got done, and they're flourishing right now, and they're doing well, because the class size room in the classes. It's hard for me to sit here and say, look at someone and to be like, sorry.
I get that, sure.
And C, I just can't say you live in a, you know, hey, you live right next to that school, and you can't go there. So I'm in favor of B as well. I mean, it, it's hard, it's tough. Not everybody's going to be happy we've all said that, so...
Yeah, I think we need to act and make a, we need to vote on the amendment, if I'm not mistaken.
Like, I was, I was just talking to the president about that, and if there was an dissent to the amendment, then it could be by acclamation, consent, amendment. But it's the maker of the, of the motion.
I, so am I supposed to amend my motion?
You may, based upon the amendment.
I, okay. Amend my motion to conclude Ken's comments that we will look at this figure.
And I will second that as well. But for a discussion, I'd, I'd let it be known that there could be some argument that we are binding a future board, but I don't believe that's the case.
Well...
I don't believe that's the case.
Are you open for discussion?
Yep.
Yes.
I know, remember. Just for my clarification, so, so in our third week of September, next fall, and we know what the enrollment is, that, and wherever it may land, I just want to have some clear guidelines for me and our administration to present to you enrollment, based on what they are, with a possibility of, you know, is there an anticipation if it went completely, uncertainty of looking at all options, including possibly changing that a year later before the three to five, that it may be, in the fall of '20, it may be different, but work through that process. I just want, is that kind of what you're implying?
That's, that's exactly. What I'm suggesting is that, again, I, I don't think B is the desirable solution, but I understand the concern about putting staff and the faculty at South in a situation where, you know, we have extremely large classes, and a trailer had to be brought in. That's not a desirable solution either.
And I think everybody's made some very, very good points this evening, and this is a, this is a difficult discussion to have. I think Dr. Lincelum's done a good job working with the committee, narrowing down the options to the three that we discussed this evening and went over. I am not supportive of B either. That's where I was initially, but, you know, after reflecting in terms of what the committee's charges were, I would also be supportive of A were it not for the capacity concerns. And having, having spoken to the staff at, at East and worked with the administration through that process, my concerns, like I mentioned earlier, is I, I worry about putting our kids and our, our teachers in a similar type of situation because of that, and I know how hard that was for the, for the staff and the kids and the parents at East School, and that's something I definitely want to see us avoid in the future. But I think, I think the amended motion is spot on, and to your comments earlier, I, I think everyone that is either streaming this board meeting or reads about it tomorrow, I think you've heard everyone say that we flatly reject the notion that one school is not as good as another.
Absolutely.
And whether it comes to property values, or your ability to get a quality education in Jefferson City Public Schools, it does not matter where you live. We are working on making every one of our buildings an excellent place to go to school.
And South is an excellent school. I, I, go over there, go over there, walk through the halls. It's wonderful dynamic, wonderful, wonderful atmosphere there.
Student of South?
Yeah.
Yes.
I've been there this year, and it's a, it's a great, great, great dynamic between the students and the faculty and, you know, it's a great dynamic.
Absolutely. The teachers are doing a good job there.
Yeah, absolutely.
The principal, Ms. Lotterer's doing a fine job. So I, I can't stress enough for a major board president that I agree with that, and I think that's our position, that there shouldn't be any confusion in terms of what the message we sent this evening, regardless of the option that we select. So I would, I would be supportive of the amended motion as well. One caveat to that, just as a, a bit of clarification, I know in the last policy committee meeting that we had spoken about getting a, a boundary policy drafted, so the policy committee can look at that and refine it and bring it back to the board as a whole. I know that that's work that you've been engaged in. I would, I would like to see that. Tell me if you think this is reasonable. I'd like to see, I'm certainly not going to put this in a motion, but I would like for us to ask you to set a, a target date of the December board meeting, to come back and have that ready for the board as a whole, for us to review and consider and take action. Is that reasonable?
Yeah.
Okay. So I think, again, what you, hopefully everyone's hearing this evening is, is that we're being very intentional about how we're going to approach this, and that we will have a policy in place, and we will keep this on the radar, and it's something that we're going to continue to look at. Additional comments? Points that haven't been made? Okay. Ms. Board Secretary, would you please, if you could, read the amended motion to make sure everyone's clear on what they're voting on?
We'll rely on Ms. for her motion to indicate we will review the student numbers on September of 2019 for Ben, for us to approve option B. And Rich made a second. Yes, thank you.
Okay. We have an amended motion on the table. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Thank you. Option B is accepted for the amended motion. Thank you all for your work on that. Thank you, Dr. Lincelum, for your efforts, and we have a couple of committee members in the room this evening, and appreciate you all taking the time to come, and certainly appreciate your comments earlier tonight, Mr. Showers, thankful for those as well. So, thanks, everybody. Move on down the agenda, moving on to new business, MSBA Board Policy Committee recommendations. Mr. Enlow, I'll turn the floor to you for that.
So we have three recommendations from the policy committee. At our last meeting, we took up, as you'll see in your packet, DJFA-AP2, which deals with managing federal funds and the need to have the financial management systems in place to, for fund control. Jason shared with us that we're already, our operating procedures are in compliance with this policy, and so the recommendation from the policy committee is to waive a second reading and to approve this policy.
So, Liz?
Thank you, Laura. Can I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Scott. Any discussion on that? Hearing done. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
Policy GDPE is a policy regarding non-renewal and termination of support staff, and the MSBA language provided clarification for notification of relevant retirement systems. Again, shall be indicated in our meeting that the reporting, the operating procedures that we have currently are compliant with that. And so, again, the recommendation of the policy committee is that we, per that procedure that's in place, we recommend the policy be adopted, and we waive a second reading.
Any questions for Ken on that one?
We have to approve.
Thank you, Laura.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lori. Discussion, hearing done. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
And the third and final is EHBC-AP1, is a procedure previously submitted and never implemented regarding compliance with State Statute 407, 1500. It's about mandated action after breach of security involving personal information. Again, Jason shared with us that our policies and procedures are compliant. In addition to that, he also noted that we have appropriate liability insurance in place that covers that kind of an incident, so if any information that we were responsible for were to be breached in any way, we would have protections as a district to help cover any costs associated with it. So, again, based on that, the recommendation by the policy committee is to waive a second reading and to approve the policy.
You have to approve.
Thank you, Lori. Can I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Laura.
Lindsay can have it.
Okay. Thank you, Lindsay. And thank you for the discussion on that one. Hearing done. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Good. Thank you, Ken. Appreciate your work on those.
Yeah.
Moving on down the line, Mr. Abashan, may I give you the floor to discuss some information related to power purchase agreements this evening?
I'd ask that several documents be included in our board package. As much for discussion, as anything else, not to have an action to buy the board vote on something to approve a power purchase agreement. That's not the intention of what I'm getting at here. I, I do work for utility, and I want to disclose that as much as anything, I work for Empire Liberty, and they're one of the investor-owned utilities in, in the state of Missouri, out of Joplin, and as well throughout the outside of the state with Liberty. That said, that's part of the reason why I know energy. And so what I've done in the past is also a lot of work through the state of Missouri on energy projects, energy savings. And in times when we see energy spikes, cost associated with infrastructure changes, you watch the news, right? I mean, there's, there's always going to be environmental compliance to make energy cleaner to produce, and also transmission costs are, are real. And, you know, when our grid is increased with its efficiency, and also with integrity and as well upgrading, costs come with it, okay? So what I'm getting at is, for us, we have an opportunity, I think, with the passage of legislation here this last year, that may help us spend some of that cost to, to be beneficial for the, for the school district. Why do I say that? We've, we've got a lot of green space that we're not doing anything with other than mowing the lawn, and we have an opportunity to maybe offset some of our costs for producing energy through power purchase agreements. Certainly, we could buy solar today and put it out in a field somewhere and, and be great. You know, does anybody want to spend that money to do it? Certainly, cost is coming down. You see the, a lot of these energy companies moving that way towards wind and solar now today anyway. And I'm, I'm not sure that coal is coming back the way that it used to. You know, five years ago, we thought that coal would never go away. That's not happening. You know, we're, we're seeing, you know, whole companies pushing towards wind and solar. My hope is that we at least have a discussion about where... and solar. My hope is that we at least have a discussion about where opportunities may lie for us to save costs. If our producer of energy, Ambern, has increased costs, they are as much as anything out of our control. And I believe as, as a board and as a former manager of a lot of these things, that wherever you can shave costs off, we should. And if you can pay it back in the 10, 15-year range for some huge infrastructure change, it's a good idea for something that might have a 25-year lifespan, okay? Because you immediately start getting savings that come back to you. So as much as anything, I wanted to present to the board that there is an idea, a concept out there to purchase solar without actually having to have a cash outlay outhand. Yes, we can buy solar and put it on a roof or make a, you know, an awning for parking, covered parking. We do that today out of our own pockets. We can also do power purchase agreements, which I've included in the board packet. And not to endorse Ameresco, they were just one that I picked because I've seen them before. I mean, by no means that they are the one company that we should work with. And in full disclosure, I have worked with them in the past and they're wonderful. Let me just say that. But that, there are other companies out there as well that do this type of work. I just thought that it was important that we take a look at it. What can power purchase agreements do? A third party can own the producer of energy, the solar, and then sell it back to the school district. And essentially, what they're able to do is take advantage of tax credits on ownership. We lease and receive the energy through an agreement called a power purchase agreement. You can do a power purchase agreement on a virtual scale, but I don't suggest that we do that. And those of you who had a chance to review the board material might have seen that you could do a power purchase agreement from a distance and buy green energy through renewable sources and just have a tree and spin it across. You actually own that electricity. Whereas if you do a power purchase agreement where you own the land and then the power is then built on your land, we have an opportunity, I think, here over the lifespan of the next 25 years, realizing this is a long time to look at. So it's a long vision kind of issue. To probably reduce our energy costs, at least in some of our big buildings that we see where you have pretty linear usage, the costs are rising. So if you have linear usage that's high and costs are rising, how do you meet that, that ability to reduce your cost over the term and have some control of the well? Power purchase agreement's one of those. So what it would essentially do is, is set a level cost for us for the next 25 years of what that electricity would cost us to receive. So you're taking some control, some local control over your own ability to produce your own power. There was a time when, you know, we were producing with coal everywhere and in, for 40, 50 years, you didn't see rate increases because the fact is we didn't have all this environmental compliance. You know, and they're spending 200 million bucks just to update a coal, you know, factory to be able to produce cleaner energy. We can do that here through, through some of the power purchase agreements. As much as anything, I wanted to raise the issue so something that we could have a discussion maybe. And we had a talk earlier about solar. You know, we should do solar, we should do solar. Well, I'm not of the mind as a former manager of property that, for a government agency, that you should just do it because it looks good. It should make financial sense. And if you don't get a payback, don't do it. And until we go through that analysis, until we have at least some discussions whether we can save money, we don't know that whether that's a good decision or not. And frankly, I just wanted to throw it out that there is an approach out there that we could utilize. Third parties could take advantage of tax credits, reduce our cost. We could give tax abatement for them, reduce our costs. There are things for us to do that we could take control of our own energy production. And I just as much as wanted to make sure that we take a look at it. And with that, I laid out for discussion.
So 25 years? I thought the lifespan of these things was 15.
You can, you can shoot out 25 years and it would depend on, you know, whatever you did with your power purchase. You might get a refresh. But, you know, there's, there's an opportunity there at least to have a structure like that.
And then what would we do when we need the land?
You could get rid of it.
Just tell these people, take your stuff and move on down the road?
Kick your solar panels.
I mean, 25 years from now, I mean, I, I mean, I think the hope in this project is to build some facilities that we don't currently have.
Right.
And so when you're talking about using our land, you know, I don't, we don't know how soon we want to maybe put a softball field and a baseball field and a cross-country track and.
The best idea is to co-locate. So for, for instance, and you've seen some of these projects in town, Houston, as well. There's, there's a bank downtown that has made covered parking with one of their solar projects. Co-location is the right idea. You could turn those into charging stations over time. There's, there's just a host of things that are, that we don't do today that 20 years from now, we will, we will see as customary. And, you know, I mean that with respect that, you know, I kind of push for change. My wife hates it. But because I'm constantly, you know, okay with that, you know. She would tell you otherwise, you know, which she decorates at the house. But the fact is that, you know, there will be times 20 years from now, we'll look back and say, I wish we would have done this. And I think that if you do a co-location where, you're right. I mean, the green space we have might be highly utilization, flat green space that you don't want to do that for. But maybe it's a hillside or, you know, maybe it's south-facing anyway and you want to do that. Or don't put it on the roof. That's the worst thing you can do. But, you know, maybe you could, you could create some covered parking that could also pay us back more. And it wouldn't, it wouldn't be a bad idea to look at.
I think it's an intriguing proposal. I appreciate you raising it. Dr. Lindstrom, do you have thoughts on this? You have some experience with solar as you stick a kickback.
I do, just do it twice.
I would just ask, Jason, are you familiar with other districts in Missouri or the Midwest that are doing any projects like this?
No, I think it's brand new. I think these will actually change because we looked at, it's my understanding when we looked at it before, we couldn't take advantage of the tax credits. And so.
Locally, you can't. As a government entity, there's some federal offsets that might be done in the city. But using a third party allows that third party to utilize the tax credit.
Without the tax credits, we looked at it, I think it was a 29-year payback. We looked at it just cost and energy savings. But if you could add in 30% tax credits, that brought it way down, I think in like 18, 19 years, we could certainly do it.
But you're suggesting that there are entities out there that are doing third-party agreements with public sector that allows them to take advantage of it?
Oh, yeah. And I, I think frankly, until we, until we at least have the discussion with some of those companies that are out there, and obviously Ameris was one, there are others that, that may provide, you know, a sharpened pencil. But until we at least have those discussions with them, we don't know as a board whether that's a good idea for us as a policy.
Our, my familiarity is Maryville Bridergy. And we basically on, we have five schools and we put solar panels on five of them. And it was basically the release program and there were enough incentives that the payback was 11 years. And I know we're talking with Architects Alliance and DLR of determining that it was a much larger, there wasn't many incentives. That's just from a lease program now. The different options and this was, we put our five on the roof in Maryville. So thank you for still there unless they blow away. I've been saying there's other options. I mean, we need to have these conversations and be stewardship's one of our pillars and be, you know, look at options to make sure we're trying to be proactive with this. So I'm willing to have the conversations and look at if there are other options that we should consider.
I mean, and the worst that could happen, I think, is as much as anything, is you lose some of, you lose some of the time that you spent, you know, seeing if it works for us. You know, and if it's not working, we write it off. Come back several years later, see if the technology's changed.
As it will.
Absolutely.
Sure, no doubt.
So we're about to reconvene the facilities committee. Should we have that as?
I was going to say, what would our next step be?
Yeah, I think, I think we, we as a board can direct the, you know, facilities committee, take a look at, you know, with, with your time and help, you know, volunteer your time for something like that. You're free to. But there, there might be an option that benefits us. It might not be beneficial for the school district to do so, but we'll just figure it out.
Any other thoughts? Scott? Wendy? All right. So I think we've got a general direction there. Thanks for the information in the, in the brief. See what we can learn in the next several meetings. Next item of business, Dr. Lindstrom, you have the floor for Board Docs.
I do. We have looked here at Board Docs as a, as a board in the last couple of years, a couple of different times, basically looking at a, making our documents readily available, publishing, revising agenda items, for example, supporting documents. You have a handout here, which is through Board Docs in partnership with MSBA. Kind of summarize of all this in, in three parts to increase our transparency. That's one thing we talk about, being stronger together and the availability of information, decreasing paperwork at the board level, board secretary level, and then just streamline our district governance. There's some information here. I know, again, that we've talked about, a couple of years when we talked about it, it was one of those of a consideration. And I think we said if we weren't, if we were not going to livestream our, our board meetings, that we didn't think we should do something along that lines. And I think as we continue to try to be a good steward of patrons' money, this is something we should consider. Shelby Scarborough, Director of HR, came from Nam Noster and they use Board Docs, so she has some experience. Any comments or anything you want to share on it, Shelby, or in a nutshell, or?
It is extremely easy to use and navigate. What was nice about it is we can upload our documents every month, but you could keep that as a board and ongoing of things that we could upload and inform you on. But then we could go back, like our teachers could see exactly what was on the agenda, all the supporting documents that support any kind of discussion, and then all the minutes from the same place. So it's just one place that we have all the information that the board is presented with, that you decide upon, that you discuss. And it just, it's, it's an easy to use system right on the website that there's public access. And then there's obviously the locked access that you all would have, things that you have in the executive session. But for you all, I would think it would be very nice to just have one place where you could put all of the information rather than scrolling through your emails and trying to find all of the, the supporting documents. It would all be in one place. That would be great.
It sounds too easy.
Joe, is this a, is this cloud solution or is it on premise?
It's cloud.
It's cloud. Okay. And we're, I mean, I guess my, my main question would be for you in terms of your comfortable security and integrity and encryption layers that they have in place?
Yes. It's all on their side. There's agreements for, for security and all those things. Yeah. We look, when we look at it in the past, we kind of look over all the security agreements. And of course, we look at them in the past. But from what I saw in the past, no concerns.
It sounds too easy. We use something similar at Capital Region. And I really enjoy it because when we're talking about financials, I can go back to several months before and see the financials that were there. And while I do appreciate that we no longer do paper and that we don't have to have these delivered to us by a person, this, this is a little bit cumbersome to navigate. If you get out of there, you have to scroll down 50 pages to get back. There's no go-to. So I really like it at Cap Region and if we can do it here, I mean, I, I think it does provide some transparency.
Well, yeah. I mean, if it's cloud, that's a much easier user, more user-friendly approach than having to do all these PDFs and stuff.
And I gotta believe it's going to save on labor costs for Stephanie, the time and effort she spends scanning and emailing and.
Yeah.
So are you asking for us to approve this? Would you like that? I will make a motion to approve.
Oh, second.
The buying of the software?
Any other points? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Good. Thank you all. Thanks for that information.
Thank you.
Calendar discussion, Dr. Lindstrom. Sorry, sorry. Mr. Hoffman. So you sit all around you.
So as I mentioned earlier, next summer is going to be a, a jam-packed, busy summer of construction at Jefferson City High School and asbestos abatement. And fortunately, in the last legislative session, we had something that changed the rules that affect school calendar starting with the 1920 school year. Currently, the law says we have to go to school 174 days and meet a minimum number of hours of 1,044 hours. In 1920, the minimum number of school days goes away. And we're currently, our shortest calendar.
About 1920, right?
Huh?
Not 1920. 2020?
2019 and 2020.
Oh, 2019 and 2020. When you said 1920, I said 1920. That's. We, we were all with them, Lorley. No, Dr. Schindorff was with me. Because he and I looked at each other like, these people are crazy. I think y'all row a different ship. Thank goodness.
Next school year. So our shortest calendar is our middle school calendar. We go 1,112 hours currently. And so the minimum is 1,044. So we started looking, what could we do to make next summer more manageable? And so looking at moving the start of school back. And we looked at several different options and what can we do to move the start of school back still in before Memorial Day and get everything we need in, in between and comply with the law. And so we have a, a calendar that we know works and we have a few things that can wiggle around within that. And so we're not looking for a motion, just having discussion that we're going to, we're going to move forward with starting school August 27th next year, which normally, which is a Tuesday, which normally I think we, it was the 15th. So we're moving the start of school back a week and a half from where we would have normally started. We've done the traditional calendar we've done probably for the last five or six years. And what we will do is I've met with MST and MNEA presidents. David is here and he can give comments if he likes. But we've had some discussion and what I'd like to do is work with them and other staff and other people to get input on exactly what, what a calendar will look like. And we'll bring that back to you next month for a first reading. We can take input from community then and then a second reading the month following. So just setting that August 27th date and then working on a final calendar.
Would we have a way to reach out to PTOs or parent organizations or some way to get parent input, parental input as well?
Right. I'll work with Ryan and seeing a way to put something out to collect input from, from multiple different stakeholder groups.
And you probably mentioned that this'll, that'll change in turn, that'll change the requirements for professional development, things of that nature. So you all be speaking with the relative parties to, to hear their thoughts in terms of how they can get all those bases covered.
Exactly.
You'll be reaching out to like the summer fields and things like that to see if they could extend, you know, to help the parents have that place for their kids.
Exactly. Yes.
Other thoughts? Again, not looking, you're not looking for a motion, just basically some.
Opening the discussion, right? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason.
Last item of business this evening on the open agenda is Lorley's favorite motion.
Motion to suspend open to enter into closed meeting by roll call vote pursuant to chapter 610.021 of the revised statute of Missouri, section 1, legal actions, causes of action or litigation involving a public governmental body, 3, hiring, firing, disciplining, or promoting a particular employees, and 13, individually identifiable personnel records, and 14, records which are protected from disclosure by law.
Thank you, Dave. Second?
Second.
Okay. You have a roll call vote when you're ready.
Lindsay, yes.
Lorley?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Very good. Thanks, folks. We will take a 10-minute recess and we'll be back in here.